Okay, Laura, you ready?
I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Boulder Valley Board of Education for Tuesday, June 21st, 2022. Board members may attend and participate by electronic means in regular or special meetings of the Board in accordance with policy BEAA and state law. Board members who attend and participate by electronic means shall identify the location from where they are participating and those present. Laura, would you please call the roll?
Garcia.
Here.
Gephardt.
Here.
Niznik.
Raj Paul.
Here.
Sargent.
Here.
Sweeney Moran.
Here.
Zess.
Here.
Thank you.
I'd like to remind everybody that the mission of the Boulder Valley School District is to create challenging, sorry, challenging, meaningful, and engaging learning opportunities so that all children thrive and are prepared for successful, specifically engaged lives. Good evening, everybody, and thank you for joining us electronically on BV22. We're glad to have you observe and participate in this, in our meetings. At this time, I would like to have a motion to approve our agenda for the evening. Any moves? Stacy seconds. Laura, can you call the vote on the motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Garcia.
Yes.
Gephardt.
Yes.
Raj Paul.
Yes.
Sargent.
Yes.
Sweeney Moran.
Yes.
Zess.
Yes.
Motion passes.
By Board policy and state law, vacancy is created automatically if a board member fails to attend three consecutive regular board meetings unless otherwise excused by the Board or the absences are due to a temporary mental or physical disability or illness. For planning purposes, and so the Board may timely consider approving additional absences, Board members are asked to notify the Board President, Superintendent, or Board Secretary in advance of an absence whenever possible. Board members may attend and participate by electronic means in a regular or special board meeting only when extenuating circumstances prevent the board member from physically attending the meeting. For purposes of Board policy, extenuating circumstances means the board member's job or military service or personal circumstances requires the member to be absent from the meeting or another significant event makes the physical presence of one or more board members inadvisable. Electronic attendance and participation may be via telephone, video, or audio conferencing or other electronic device. A board member may attend and participate by electronic means in a maximum of two board meetings per calendar year unless otherwise approved by the Board. To attend and participate by electronic means in a board meeting shall notify the Board President, Board Secretary, or Superintendent of the request to attend by electronic means at least three business days prior to the meeting, or if such advance notice is not possible, as soon as is reasonably possible. The Board is recommended to approve all prior electronic participation by board members and to approve the electronic participation of a board member potentially for the 6/21/2022 meeting. Do I have a motion?
So move.
No, that's next. But if you move, then then Stacy. Okay, Lisa moved for this.
Do you want me to make a motion?
No, just move.
Yes, so moved.
Moved by Lisa, seconded by Stacy. Laura, can you call the roll?
Garcia.
Garcia. Garcia.
Yes.
Thank you. Gephardt.
Yes.
Niznik. Raj Paul.
Yes.
Sargent.
Yes.
Sweeney Moran.
Yes.
Zess.
Yes.
Motion passes.
I'd like to clarify on the record that the Board of Education has issued a discussion. May I have a motion?
I'm Lisa Sweeney Moran, make a motion to convene into executive session pursuant to CRS 2464024EI to determine positions relative to charter school contract negotiations for Boulder Prep and Justice High School, develop strategy for charter school negotiations, and instruct negotiators regarding charter school contracts, and pursuant to CRS 2464024B to receive legal advice regarding the charter school contract negotiations with Boulder Prep and Justice High School, and pursuant to CRS 2464024EI for purposes of determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations, and instructing negotiators regarding bargaining with the Boulder Valley Classified Employees Association, BVCEA, pursuant to CRS 2464024E3 for purposes of developing the strategy of the school district for negotiations relating to collective bargaining with the BVCEA, and pursuant to CRS 2464024B CRS to receive legal advice regarding negotiations relating to collective bargaining with the BVCEA.
Is there a second? Seconded by Stacy. Laura, can you call the roll, please?
Garcia.
Yes.
Gephardt.
Yes.
Raj Paul.
Yes.
Sargent.
Yes.
Sweeney Moran.
Yes.
Zess.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Will now convene into executive session. We're now back in session. For our information item of the night, tonight we will continue with our update on the strategic plan metrics, and I will turn it over to you, Dr. Anderson, to continue the introduction.
Thank you, Board President Gephardt, members of the Board. Back for round two is Jonathan and Laura to talk to you about the rest of our strategic plan metrics. Tonight, we're going to be focusing on reducing disproportionality, and they will walk you through some of the data related to our strategic plan metrics, and then some other bright spots and some other opportunities to improve. So with that, I will turn the presentation over to Jonathan and Laura.
Great, thank you. Good evening, President Gephardt, members of the Board. As Dr. Anderson said, tonight we are picking up where we left off last week. As you recall, we shared data in the areas of closing achievement and opportunity gaps, and tonight we will be sharing data in the area of reducing disproportionality. So in looking at reducing disproportionality, we'll focus on the data that we have at this time, which is for discipline, special education, gifted and talented, advanced placement, and dual enrollment. And as we share the data here, we'll be referring to both disproportionate and proportionate trends. So this slide serves just as a reminder, when we look at our work to create more proportionality in discipline, the reminder of the actions that we've taken to change the institution and to address disproportionate discipline. So we hired a lot of people back in the fall that we shared with you at the time, a restorative practices specialist, a Title IX coordinator, mental health advocates, and RISE facilitators, and of course, school safety advocates. And we've provided and will continue to provide training across the system in appropriate recording of discipline, response to discipline and behavior, and these happen in meetings and trainings such as Vortex, RISE, and restorative practices trainings. Just as a reminder, RISE is a whole school social-emotional learning program that's culturally and trauma-responsive and promotes resilience and social-emotional skills and well-being in our educators, and focuses on building intentional classroom environments to support positive culture and climate. First and foremost, we have had a reduction in students who were suspended or expelled, and we've increased restorative practices relative to the last full school year. As you remember, we are comparing most of our data to the last full in-person school year of 2018-19. Notably, we have this year 89 fewer Latinx students who were suspended this year as compared to 2018-19. You can also see that we've had overall reductions in suspensions and referrals by BVSD staff to law enforcement, and we've had an overall increase in restorative interventions and alternatives to suspension. In fact, we've had six times the restorative interventions in 21-22 than in 2018-19, and almost double the alternatives to suspension. What we're referring to here in taking a look at the consistent decline in BVSD employees referring incidents to law enforcement is just that, the decline in our BVSD employees referring incidents to law enforcement as a behavior resolution. So the referrals listed here are indicators of our BVSD employees having referred to law enforcement, not how many students in BVSD were arrested. These numbers come from our indicators in our reporting system for referral to law enforcement as a behavior resolution. So you can follow the timeline here to see that in the last full in-person school year of 1819, we had 134 BVSD referrals to law enforcement, and with a decline each year of the pandemic, which we know were aberrant years with virtual learning. But looking at this school year, we see a comparison to 2018-19 from 134 to 26. And so that's 108 less referrals by BVSD employees to law enforcement as a behavior resolution. And because of the practices that we've changed, our BVSD folks are referring more to our school safety advocates and less to law enforcement. So what we've tried to resolve is our BVSD employees and those referrals to law enforcement, and we're seeing that our internal responses to behavior and discipline are changing. We know that there are different ways of measuring the numbers, and we're confident that we've made improvements over time, and that we're less likely internally to refer to law enforcement as a result of the changes that we've made and that we're making. We also know that law enforcement statistics will come out in August, and we look forward to seeing that data as well.
Lisa?
I just wanted to jump in for a second, Laura, and say, you know, I always have more questions about why we're referring anyone and what we can do to stop it and what's happening, but really, this is just an incredibly exciting slide, and I'm so enthusiastic to see what kinds of changes we are seeing post-SRO removal. It's fantastic, so thank you all so much.
So with the substantial improvements that we made this year to the way in which we gathered data, we in some ways should think of this year going forward as a new baseline year. And so one of the opportunities that we'll see in this year is that while the number of Latinx students being suspended or expelled has gone down, the basic proportionality is really very high, that we have about twice as many students with a suspension or expulsion as we would expect based on the proportion of Latinx students in BVSD and of students who are free-reduced lunch eligible. So I think it's important for us to look at this as an area where we will need to focus as we understand the practices that we have more. And when I say suspensions and expulsions, virtually all of what you're looking at there is suspensions. There are like a handful of expulsions in a given year. Kathy.
President. Just a quick question in terms of the suspensions. You said a handful of expulsions, and I don't know how many that is, five, a handful?
Yeah.
The suspensions, did we get a better handle in terms of why they're getting suspended? Because when we did the disciplinary RFI to begin with, they were all over the place. I mean, from little incidents to persistent misbehavior or whatever. Do we have a better handle in terms of why our kids are getting suspended now?
I would say that we've made real efforts to more basically standardize the process and to make the response more even across schools, and that as a result of that and the restorative practices being used, we are suspending less. So the question you've asked merits more study, I think, than just off the top of my head.
I think that's the next step, right? Now that we have created a process that's consistent from school to school, and as a reminder, right, prior to Board changing policy, us changing practice, us implementing a discipline matrix and implementing that across all of our schools, schools were coming up with their own codes, some were entering data, some weren't entering data, it was really hard to get a handle on what was actually happening, right? So now that we know and have an understanding, the things that we'll need to be doing as we work through Vortex and other measures is what are the codes where most kids are getting suspended for? And then you have to worry about the codes that are less clear and more fuzzy, like disrespect, insubordination, right? Where these kind of catch-all things, where you have to really start to dig into those behaviors, right? You know, if a kid brings a weapon, that's pretty clear-cut. There's some codes within our matrix that are more clear-cut than others. And so the next steps will be digging in, asking schools to do that by site, asking for us to do that as a district, and think and understand what training do teachers need, do schools need, right, so they can become more culturally responsive, so they can learn how to better de-escalate as opposed to escalate situations? And in classroom management, that's a big thing that teachers need to know and understand. How do you de-escalate a situation? How do you provide some of those restorative practices? How do you, how as the adults in the building, do we ensure, right, that we're not making or compounding situations or making them worse, that we're bringing down the temperature? But that'll just have to be through further study. That's the right question to be asking, though, Richard.
Thank you very much, because I'm looking at the numbers here, and I look at our white population, it's 330, that's the number of suspensions versus 294, the number of suspensions for Hispanic students, is that what I'm seeing?
So it's the number of students who have had a suspension or an expulsion. So even then, there's more room for us to dig in here. This treats all those, a student who got four or five of those shows up once, a student who got one shows up once, a student who got a half-day suspension shows up the same as somebody who was suspended for five days. So this is a first look at the data, and there really is more for us to dig into.
Thanks a lot, I appreciate that, but man, that is very concerning, especially from my perspective.
Mine, too. So one of the areas where we've seen some improvements over time is in terms of improved proportionality around special education, in that while the movements are bigger within some very specific categories, we've seen some gap closing work overall in that the Latinx gap was reduced by seven tenths of a point, and the free-reduced lunch student gap was reduced by one and a half points from 2018-19, our last full year, to this year, with the caveat I'll remind us about from last time around the free-reduced lunch population, that there was, that based on a large group of students I've identified because of losing their housing in the fire, we have to look a little cautiously at improvements that we make in that area. But the sort of overall, the sort of big-picture positive here is that although these aren't huge changes, some changes that are specific to disability have been made such that we are no longer requiring the designation of special education funds to something called coordinating early interventions services after September of 2023. This is a big deal, and that that big deal has come about based on improvements specific to our Latinx and population, and there have also been improvements for our Native American population, so.
So Jonathan, I'm not sure I understood what that big change is. What is the change in practice? Is it a change in practice that we're doing? I was just trying to figure out what it is that led to. Okay, Rob.
So there's federal requirements, and because especially with free-reduced lunch students and dollars that we get for special education, where they look at our proportionality in regards to identifying students for special education, and if you over-identify, you know, in our case, our Latinx students, right, with, you know, you get direction from the feds to say, listen, you have to come back with improportionality, or with the federal funds that we give you, we're going to require you to take a certain percentage out from what you'd been using those funds for and dedicate it solely to this purpose. This is something that hits districts across the country, and the fact that we were able to turn that around, you know, look at our processes, look at our MTSS process, look at the ways that we are identifying students to be served in special education, and we're able to reduce that in the right ways. We're not going to, the feds aren't going to come and mandate the ways that we spend our Title I dollars, which would have impacted classrooms, it would have impacted funding for schools, and so it's a significant accomplishment to be able to come below that threshold of disproportionality.
But, so, I get that, Rob, but what did we do to come below? Because it sounded like there was a change in practice or something that we were doing differently to...
Yep, and this has been going on for a couple of years. I may have Robin for an end. If we need specifics, I think Robin would be probably best suited to be able to understand that. Lots of intervention, I think that we've looked very carefully at our processes, ensuring that we're doing the right amounts of data collections in classrooms before we're jumping to the conclusion that a student needs to be staffed in special education, spending more time in what we would call Tier Two in our multi-tiered system of supports, where students are getting interventions in the class in addition to their regular general ed instruction, which you would call Tier One, in an effort to see if those things improve student performance and achievement so you didn't have to go to Tier Three, which would be special education services. So the identification changes inside classrooms, and I think just an overall general change and a uniform change in direction would be the big levers that we've been pulling to try to bring this number down.
I'll just keep pondering that. If we have more questions in the fall, we can talk about it. Because, I mean, the concern is that you drive the numbers down just to drive the numbers down, and then we're not serving the kids, right? Because that's the problem when you have thresholds and ratios, is that sometimes you, there's an incentive to not identify, and there's an incentive to not, and I don't think we're doing that, I just want to make sure that the reason that the number's going down is because we're increasing our MTSS and because of the interventions that we're doing and all of that. And so obviously, the data doesn't really talk to that, but that's just where my brain goes, is what, that's why I ask, what are the interventions that are driving the numbers down? So I think I understand that a little better.
And I want to say that Michelle, when she presented on special education, dove into this a little bit, Board members, if you'll recall, but we're happy to bring back more intervention and more details, Kathy. And this needs to be continued conversation, because just because we're, you know, we're below the line, right? But, you know, if we're doing the right things, our Tier Two interventions through an MTSS are going to really make the difference, especially as we're talking about closing gaps. And so certainly happy to bring that back to the Board and continue the conversation.
And if I may, I would just add to that, that the layer of consultation from our MTSS team, our MTSS director and coordinators, as well as our special education executive director and directors to school teams to ensure that students are being provided with those very precise interventions, is also contributing so that we're ensuring that kids are getting the interventions that they need to improve and grow, and principals and school teams are getting the consultation that they need in order to put kids on that path.
And I think one of the data points I asked for earlier is just how our students identified with disabilities are doing on tests, and we can get that in the fall.
All right. So looking at advanced course enrollment, this is typified in terms of enrollment and APIB and other advanced coursework, and that, you know, and that we have some concerns here with this data, right, in that we've seen about a half a percentage point of difference in gap, which has gotten a little bit bigger then for Latinx students. Now, while we note that this year was a hard year to advance students relative to years ordinarily, right, in that there are a lot of concerns because students are coming off of two very unusual years, and that this was also a harder one, so that, not to excuse, but to understand that this wasn't a business as usual patterns in data year, this is one to understand relative to our last full year of 18-19, and to move forward from that way. But so the positive here, though, that we can be thinking about, right, is we have that improvement for students who are free-reduced lunch eligible, noting we have to look at that with some caution in terms of who was identified later on this year.
Just a quick question here, this is advanced course enrollment, which doesn't include IB or any of the special programs that we have at the high schools, like IB, engineering, and those kinds of programs?
So it would include an engineering course if it were advanced, and I don't know off the top of my head if all of the engineering courses are advanced, or if it's only the second or third level of course, but it would certainly include all advanced placement, all international baccalaureate, and any course that's labeled advanced in the catalog.
Because one of the concerns that I've heard is the disproportionality in terms of Latino kids or kids of color, in that case, enrolling into your IB programs or your engineering programs. And are we going to hear about that disproportionality at some point in time, or would that be included? Sorry about that.
We can absolutely look deeper and ask questions, which fits very much in the model of looking at opportunities, right?
Absolutely, yeah.
And being in the pipeline for...
Thanks, I'd like to see that, yeah.
That's the question I have. I don't know how you measure this, but so much of how these students end up in these classes starts really early on, and kind of, I don't know that we track, but I think we probably do some tracking of students. So how do we find out what interventions we're doing earlier on so that, we're measuring kind of an endpoint here, so how do we measure what we're doing in the midpoints to make sure that those students are getting the classes that allow them then to take these advanced classes? So it's just, I don't know how we'd measure that, but it's certainly something I think we would like to know what we're doing, because if we just keep measuring the endpoint, I mean, it'll change a little bit, I don't think it's going to change significantly if we aren't changing the tracks that get on there. So I don't know, Rob, what we could do for that, but I think if we could talk about what interventions we're doing there, or what we're doing to try to improve that, because I think it starts as early as sixth grade, that you start tracking in math and tracking in all that.
Yeah, so it's easier to track in math, right, in that we really do have a checkpoint grade level, grades five, eight, and 11. So we really there do have a way to measure, is advancement occurring in a way that will lead to opportunities for high-level math courses at the end of high school? It's not this, it's not as easy to track in language arts, right? So...
So we could get that data... So we could, we could get that data. This is just, like I said, an endpoint, but we could find out what's going on in fifth, eighth, and right, for, at least for the math classes?
So the math measurement that, that Jonathan's already shared with you all, we already know everybody who's above grade level math at fifth, eighth, and 11th grade. So I think that, that the first challenge that you take on in looking at advanced course enrollment are the opportunities that we provide kids either to enroll in advanced classes earlier than high school, or how are we identifying students and providing them opportunities to prepare them for the rigors of advanced coursework. So to the extent that we, I cannot tell you today that we have uniform opportunities across our district in those areas. We don't, right? You know, met, you know, this is why you measure things, right? This is why you have metrics, right? Because, you know, before we had strategic plan metrics, I'll remind the board, we would just, you know, we would assume things were happening, the board, we'd get frustrated, we'd ask, what's the information? What's going on? What's this? I've heard this horrible story from this family, right? And it would be really, really hard to get information. Our public would be asking information. They'd be doing open records requests, right? So, so we've evolved to a place where the information is clear, but then we have to own what that information says and create plans for improvement, especially around advanced course enrollment, especially for our, our, our students of color, our students of poverty, our students in special education. So the strategies that you would use, you know, those are things that we'll have to work with schools and work with our team to develop. And then we can first measure the opportunities, right? So this time next year, my hope would be board members, remember, we talked about this, these are the opportunities we could, we have provided. Look at the opportunities we've provided, because then, once following opportunity is growth, and following growth is achievement. So again, just following that same kind of just line of thinking, but we've been, we're able to identify problems, and we have work to do.
So along with that, we've gotten a whole package of suggestions from Equity Council around Grad+ work that centered on this, as well as three other areas, and I believe Youth Equity Council weighed in as well. So do we have a time in the upcoming year where we're going to look at the degree to which whether, how, et cetera, we implemented those suggestions and how they're impacting these numbers?
Yeah, thank you, Lisa. That's a very important feedback that our Equity Council, Youth Equity Council provided us on Grad+. Those, those are recommendations we're taking incredibly seriously as we're beginning to, to build out those initiatives. And I think that that is something to hold us accountable to. So as you say, when are we going to be reporting out as we report out on Grad+? I think that those are the time to ask those questions and share kind of where we are with that progress.
I mean, they just had so many great suggestions around ways to do exactly what we're discussing, right, to engage kids earlier, to engage with parents, to talk about, and they had suggestions ranging, ranging from when that could occur to how that could occur, to different methods of delivery. Like, I felt like so many of the things we're discussing now had been specifically addressed. And I know for Richard and I, who were sitting in on those meetings, like, the amount of feedback that we were getting on a regular basis through those meetings, there was no lack of ideas for how to solve these issues.
So for our last slide of this kind of, kind of data, we, we can also look at proportionality in terms of gifted and talented identification. And what we see is, while there's no change in proportionality for Latinx students overall, a gap of about 10%, there, there is an improvement at the elementary level of 1.4, and there's a bigger improvement for free and reduced lunch students, recalling the caveat. So, so as we're thinking about the, the data, we have this, this, this other way of looking at advancement also. Oh, oh, yes. And then, so I, we can, you can tell me if you want to go into these in, in depth or, or not, but I, but I wanted to put in some slides that feature the work that's been done at schools where we've had a real emphasis. And I put these in not necessarily to go through each of them line by, by, by the line, but to point to the kind of, what the kind of proportionality is that we can see. So, so we see Sanchez's data here in, in, in areas related to, 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 to behavioral incidents, and being identified for special education as, 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 as having fairly good proportionality by, by race, ethnicity, and with regard to free and reduced lunch, lunch eligibility. At Pioneer, we're looking at proportionality here in terms of behavior and the, what we call exclusionary discipline as a shorthand for suspensions. And then, when we look at Cole, right, we can look at this in terms of the, those, those, those areas and gifted and talented identification for both race, ethnicity, and for free and reduced lunch eligibility. I'm not telling you that every one of those bars lines up perfectly, but that when we look, look at this, that we have an idea of what proportionality may look like more in, in these, and as examples of the, the work being, being done, the impact of work being done.
You need, you need to explain those slides to me, because I really don't. So, for example, if you go to Sanchez's.
Do we need Rob to be our?
There you go, Rob. Get up.
So as we think about proportion... It's official. I'm at the board. As we think about proportionality, and Jonathan and team are working on tweaking these slides a little bit to be a little bit more clear, right? You, you want to see, right, your, your populations that are typically disproportionate within the gray bar, right? So, for example, for behavior at Sanchez's, Hispanic Latino students make up about, you know, 65% of the student population, and their behavior incidences make up less than, like, 58%, right? So the, the number of behavior incidents for Hispanic Latino students at Alicia Sanchez's is proportionate to the population, right? You would see the same thing for students who are identified for IEPs, right? Same number, not over the bar. Behavior free and reduced lunch, right? All of the students on free and reduced lunch are making up the majority of behavior. They're not making up the, the majority of expulsionary discipline, and they're not making up the majority for IEP. So in regards to proportionality, if you were to judge Alicia Sanchez's on behavior, identification for IEP, exclusionary discipline, what you would conclude is Sanchez's is proportionate. And if you were to go back over time and see when was the last time that happened, if it ever happened, that's significant progress.
Okay, that's, that's the part that I can understand, is that it's proportionate to the population of the kids that are enrolled at Sanchez's based on their ethnicity or their, okay?
So, Rob, can you do that for the next slide, too? Just so we...
Before that, wouldn't we then say that the orange bars are still disproportionate?
Did you hear Nicole's question, Rob?
Yes, but remember, we're talking about proportionality for underserved populations, right? So yes, would, would in this instance, white students be disproportionate at Sanchez's? Same thing for Pioneer behavior. Remember, the gray bar is within, what, 1%, 2%? Within 1% to 3%? Which you would, you would figure as a range still keeps you within proportionality, and exclusionary discipline, you know, not as disproportionate as maybe years in past, or certainly not as disproportionate when you looked at the district averages earlier on exclusionary discipline.
And, and in working with ends, there are really very, very little, right? The, the difference between the, the bar for, for being, being orange and being blue is whether there are four or five kids. There happen to be five Latinx kids in that top line, in the exclusionary discipline line.
I think I understand what exclusionary discipline is, but could you explain it to me?
It's the, it's the phrase that we've picked and may need to reexamine for talking about suspensions and expulsions. It's, it's meaning that as a result of a behavior incident, a student is excluded from regular participation. Some people would say that the phrase, we, we may need to change, change, change that because exclusionary discipline could also mean some other things that happen. Being sent to the office is, in some regards, that same thing of being excluded from, from class.
Well, that, that's a little bit concerning, too, whether it's proportionate or not. You know, when you have almost half, what is it, at Sanchez's, what is, what is it at Sanchez's? When you have, what, 60 or some percent of your... Yeah. When you have...
The, the blue bar, are the number of students that are... Explain that to me again, Rob.
So for behavior, 11 Hispanic Latino students had a behavior incident in our system, right? Seven white students. And 11 is less than the proportion of Hispanic Latino students in the school, right? If that were 12 or 13, it'd be over here, 14, 15. Then it becomes, right? Proportionality becomes an issue when you start looking at your system, and, and subgroups of students are getting significantly different outcomes that are inexplicable, right, and that are not okay, right? Now, we've showed you the system numbers. As a reminder, 89 less students, Latinx students, suspended, expelled, still disproportionate as a district. But in these high support schools, right, they're bucking the trend, the district trend in significant ways. In the district trend, this number would be 22, give or take, right, as opposed to 11. Right? So what I think Jonathan and the team are trying to highlight, and we've tried to do this throughout these presentations, is the, the progress we're seeing at our high support schools is notable and something as a district we can learn from.
Thanks.
I just have another question. I think the data that you have on some of the schools around GT, the data is not consistent for what we have from school to school. So it would be great to see some more of that data, like for Cole. Like, we don't have GT under Sanchez's, and we don't have IEPs under Pioneer. So I just think if we could have some of that more consistent data the next time, that would, because I think the GT's really interesting, too, kind of given our earlier discussion about tracking, non-tracking, that kind of thing. So I just think in the future, it would be helpful to have some of that, too, not clearly.
So these slides are highlighting bright spots. These are things that are of note. Those, that other data, data may fall along district trend lines. But again, as a reminder, board members and for the public, all this data will be public as we roll our strategic plan metrics on our website. And so folks can dial into a school, a group of schools, know and understand any of these metrics. We believe in full transparency and accountability. And our hope and our direction will be that schools will work with their, their school advisory councils in developing their school improvement plans from the same sheet of music, the data that we can all see, as a way to be consistent, be open with our community, understand where things are going well, and clearly know the opportunities that we need to take advantage of to improve in line with our strategic plan and just the core values of our community. And that's a big change.
So clearly, we have shared with you some bright spots, some opportunities for improvement, and we just want to summarize a few of those here. You can see in the summary of bright spots that we shared both last week and tonight, our K3 reading is mostly at pre-pandemic levels, along with promising elementary fall to spring reading levels. We have indicators that students see that teachers care. We're seeing gap closing for FRL-eligible students, targeted delivery of interventions. We're seeing fewer suspensions, increases in restorative practices, and improved Latinx proportionality in gifted and talented and special education. Also, in our conversations, your questions, and as we were mining the data, we clearly have opportunities for improvement. We are really excited about the promise of Grad+, which is an avenue leading us to increase offerings and support in advanced AP, IB, and concurrent enrollment for students of color, particularly Latinx students and students who are eligible for free and reduced lunch. In terms of advanced math offerings, we'll be resuming the math coursework pathways work that was postponed during the pandemic. We'll be, we'll also be working with our schools to increase advanced math offerings and support for students of color, particularly Latinx students and students who are FRL-eligible. We're to forge ahead in our work to reduce disproportionality. We're continuing to increase training and implementation of restorative practices and alternatives to suspension, as well as culturally responsive practices. We're launching a multi-tiered support system guide and training this summer. We've already launched that with our leaders, in fact, and we'll continue that professional learning throughout next year. We all are, are enthusiastic about the opportunity that MTSS brings, and that it's a prevention-based framework to improve the outcomes for every student through a layered continuum of supports. And we're also expanding our data-driven instruction, professional learning, and practices. We anticipate that both MTSS and DDI will lead to increased precision of interventions and supports. And we're happy to take any additional questions that you have at this time.
Thank you very much, Laura, and Jonathan. Great presentation, again. Good work on the reduced disproportionality as it relates to increased restorative practices. Is this some, is the restorative practices across all schools down in Boulder Valley School District? I mean, do we have like a common process for, for restorative practices to be triggered so that, you know, what, what would trigger that, I guess, is a question that I have in terms of restorative practices? And, and do we have people that have, that are specialized in restorative practices in every one of the schools or in our high-impacted schools?
Thanks for that question. So all of our school leaders engage in a meeting monthly called the Vortex, where they learn about not only reporting discipline and behavior incidents appropriately, but also addressing and responding to them differently. And that includes training on restorative practices and expectations around that. So we know that we have administrators who are prepared to facilitate those restorative practices and interventions in schools. We have common frameworks. Of course, we have our restorative practices coordinator who also consults with all of our schools. All of our schools, though, are at different levels of implementation, and so that's an area that we're continuing to shore up. And we have plans to continue rolling up our sleeves with our school leaders next year as they expand... as they expand those practices so that others in their schools can support the facilitation of those as well. So yes, there's an expectation across all schools. All school leaders have been trained and are being trained and will continue to, but they are at different levels of implementation.
Can you give an example of what would trigger a restorative practice in a school?
I think that almost any incident where a student's behavior is, where a student behavior arises, that's concerning in any way. It could be something that would typically have been a referral to the office or a referral for suspension. It could be, it could be kids who are, you know, engaging in verbal altercation. It could be kids who are being, as Dr. Anderson said, disrespectful, however that's defined, but for whom a restorative conversation, affirmative statements, opportunities to interact with their peers, with adult facilitation will help them to learn from the behavior so that they understand more about what was the impact of my behavior? Who was impacted by it? And what do I need to do to make amends and restore the relationship? So restorative practices and interventions can really be applied to most behavior incidents that arise.
Is this a topic the board would be interested in learning more about as we think about going into the fall to get in the weeds a little bit on what it is, how we train schools, when can it be used, when's it inappropriate? Maybe this is a potential for agenda setting at the end of the meeting. We could think about this as something to consider in our prioritization meeting for
This is also about the restorative intervention. So there were 935 more. Were they all successful? I mean, are there restorative interventions where the kid doesn't get it or, you know, it doesn't help their behavior?
If I had to speculate, they're not all successful. I mean, I think as a first pass, I think it's the right way to go, but there's potentially, you know, students with repeated misconduct. I mean, I can't imagine they were all successful. I would say this, though. It's a mind shift in student discipline. It's a mind shift for our adults to see, is there a way we could figure this out? The kid can learn a lesson. The student who was on the other end of the incident can be restored, and we can move forward without pulling kids out of classes, which takes the kid away from their instruction and never really gets to the root cause of the issue, and then it lingers. So I would say that it's more of a mind shift. I would be hard pressed that any of our interventions work all of the time. Promising practice, again, over the course of the past 12 months, board members, we've posted, hired a position, someone who's been in our schools with expertise in restorative justice, training individual schools to create different responses. We have more, we have evidence of more of those responses and evidence of less of our students being suspended, right, would be all the things that you'd hope to see in the first year of implementation.
It seems to me that this is a much more labor-intensive process for teachers, but like you say, it actually gets to the root cause. So I think it'd be really helpful to understand a little bit more about kind of where we are in different, in the spectrum of implementation. And I get that it also looks a lot different in an elementary school than it does in a high school. So I think that's a great idea. Thanks, Rob. I saw a lot of heads nodding. We can bring it up at the end of the meeting. Other questions, board members? On the, Nicole?
It's not so much a question, but a comment, appreciative of the amount of time you are taking to look into these metrics, to share them in a very transparent way, and own the fact that we are, we have a lot of things to celebrate and a lot of work to do that's not always been easy to do in this district. And so that, even changing in that perspective, is worth a really big celebration. So thank you for all the work and holding to our strategic plan and making sure we're doing what's best for our schools and our kids and our community.
Rob? Because I have one last question.
Question, then I'll make a comment.
So I know that we were part of a pilot to look at kind of how we hold ourselves accountable and what those metrics are. I'm wondering if as we go forward, if there are additional metrics that would be helpful for us to look at than, other than ones that we've looked at, just as an ongoing conversation? Because I don't know where we ended up with the pilot, but I think there's always the non, kind of test score, non-measurable kind of metrics that are interesting to look at. So I'd just be curious in the fall if we could think about other kinds of things we could be looking at to see how we're doing.
I think the fall is timely. Board members, I would anticipate as, and for the public to know and understand, a bill was passed two years ago that required CDE's accountability systems to be audited, right? The findings of that I would anticipate coming out in the fall. And then it just poses the bigger question around accountability. What are the things that we should look at? How many of those things should local communities be involved with? What are the academic and non-academic measures we know equate to the right opportunities for kids to be successful? How does it expand beyond test scores? I do think that that conversation will be happening in the fall, and I think that the state of Colorado will have an opportunity. Educators, lawmakers, you know, those that serve, I think really need to dig into that question. What should we be looking at? How often should we be looking at it? What is success? And I think that that conversation will be primed for the fall.
And it's really exciting to think that we could be part of the group that's leading some of that conversation, as we were in the pilot group, and just kind of thanks to the great work of you all and to continue that conversation, I think is really exciting to think about as we go into the fall. So thanks.
I just want to end by thanking our team and just recognizing, as Nicole did, the shift in the district conditions that we have created in the Boulder Valley School District, right? Owning the things we need to get better at, celebrating the things that we feel like are working, not creating clouds of inconsistency or question around where things are. You know, I think that these are important steps in system-level improvement. And then with the increased transparency and then driving that to our improvement planning efforts, turning those from more than a check-the-box thing to something that we're dedicating energy, resources to, and looking at what works and what doesn't work. So I'm just really proud of our team. I'm proud of our district. I'm proud of this board for giving the direction for us to create these big changes. You'd be hard pressed to find a school district in the state of Colorado that's holding itself more accountable than BVSD is in these ways, and I'm really proud of that.
We good to keep going? All right. So next we have the action items consent grouping. 5.1 Personnel Items, 5.2 Approval of Minutes, June 14, 2022, 5.3 Approval of Minutes, June 14, 2022, 5.4 Approval of Renewal Charter Contract for Boulder Prep, 5.5 Approval of Renewal Charter Contract for Justice High School, 5.6 Approval of Superintendent's Contract for 2022-23, Approval of Superintendent's Evaluation. Are there any items board members would like to pull from the consent grouping? Lisa?
I would like to pull 5.04 and 5.05, please.
Any others, board members? Do we have a motion to approve the remaining consent agenda items? So, moved by Nicole, seconded by Kitty. Any questions or comments about the remaining items? I would just like to say that I'm super excited that we're going to have our superintendent with us for another year. Many more, we hope. So thank you, Rob, for steering us through everything we've had to go through this last year, and we're super excited that we will continue to be able to work together. So I just wanted to say thank you very much because it's been a true honor to be able to work with you, and I really appreciate everything that you've done. So can we, Laura, can you call the roll, please? Garcia?
Yes.
Gebhardt?
Yes.
Raj Paul?
Yes.
Sargent?
Yes.
Sweeney Moran?
Yes.
Zess?
Yes.
Motion passes. So now we have items 5.4 and 5.5, which have been pulled from the consent agenda. Lisa, do you have a statement that you need to make around that?
I'm not really sure. I think the board wanted to have ongoing discussions about the mill levy model and how it impacts these contracts.
And the contracts will be approved pending, the draft contracts pending the discussions around-
Oh, my thing. I didn't realize that.
Go ahead.
So I would like to move that we allow council to continue working on those issues and that we approve the draft contracts pending the changes discussed today in executive session.
Any other comments or questions?
You need a second?
We need a motion and then a second.
That was my motion.
Okay, that was-
Can I have it again?
No, you're right. Second, okay. All right. Stacy seconded. Can you call the roll, Laura? Garcia?
Yes.
Gebhardt?
Yes.
Raj Paul?
Yes.
Sargent?
Yes.
Sweeney Moran?
Yes.
Zess?
Yes.
Motion passes. So the last thing, just briefly, is agenda setting. So we heard that we would like to have an update on restorative practices going forward, and I saw a lot of heads nodding around that. Today was the forecast, so I would love to have our CFO come and talk to us about it because we're going to have exorbitantly high refunds at the same time as they've said the interest rate, or sorry, not interest, but inflation's really high. So I just think it would be really helpful for our public in the fall to have an update on kind of what that looks like, because we're giving back literally billions of dollars at the same time as we're trying to balance budgets on very limited dollars. So I just think it would be really helpful to have that conversation. And I think he would do it anyway, but I don't know that we've had him so tied to forecasts, but I think this forecast is particularly interesting, given negotiations and everything that we're trying to balance. And then a request maybe of Kathleen. We had an interesting Supreme Court opinion come out today, and it might just be really helpful to have an update on kind of what that may mean for us on, because it's kind of a complete shift in the way that we're looking at funding for schools and what's allowed to be funded and what's not allowed to be funded. But maybe in the fall, we could just get a brief update on that, too. So any other ideas for agenda setting?
I just want to ask again, based on the last board meeting, in terms of my request, to see if we can revisit the community schools policy.
All right. Thanks, Richard. All right, anything else? So I wish all of you a restful summer, and we will meet, is it August 2nd is when our next meeting is? So thanks, everyone, for hanging in there with us, and it's great to see you as always, but I hope you can take some time off. So meeting adjourned.